Open up the meeting. It is seven oh five, lower level, um, meeting room of the town hall, May twenty-second. If you could all please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, the first thing we're going to discuss, guys, on our new business, actually, I'll introduce the board first. So, uh, my name is Zachary Perrin. I am the chairman of the board. Uh, we have Greg Logan, who is the vice chairman, uh, Jason Quinn, who is the clerk, Jonathan Gale, member, and our newest member, Michelle Lima. This is her first meeting, so we're not gonna go easy on her.
Take it easy, I was gonna say, take it easy.
No, 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 no.
We'll throw one in the fire, let's go.
Nicole Skalison, who's our office manager, and Margaret Mitchell, who is the attorney for the zoning board. Uh, the first thing we're going to do today is review, discuss an act on Stony Ridge Estates and the no-touch zone. We brought in Fisher and Owen to discuss that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay.
For this discussion because I live at Stony Ridge.
Yep.
So I'm gonna step away from this discussion.
Yep, absolutely. All right, do you mind?
Yeah.
Your name and your hand.
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Owen, I, whenever you're ready.
All right. Uh, yep, so Owen Kelly. St- Stony Ridge LLC. Um, so we're here today to discuss a property line that lies along the, uh, no-touch zone in Stony Ridge Estates. Um, I dropped off a couple of different, uh, images. Actually, I'm gonna take Jonathan's packet and pass it down here near Jason, so you have it, all right? Uh, so the white sheet, you should have, actually, Marguerite can pass it hers. All right, so the white sheet.
Sure.
Talks, is showing the lot that we're talking about, which is Lot thirty-five.
Yep.
Um, the shaded area is the no-touch zone that's on the back of, of the lot. The property in discussion is the Garrett property, and we're talking about, you know, this line here. So normally with the no-touch zone, the idea is any tree buffer that's there, we leave, we don't touch it, and that way it's, you know, serves as a buffer zone between their house and this house. When I was walking the property line about five years ago, um, following it, just seeing, okay, this is where we're tree cutting, this is where all the lines went up. If you flip to the next image, which should show a chicken coop on the left-hand side.
So the six on the left.
Yeah, it's like, kind of like a, uh, shaded chicken coop.
Yep.
Okay? Um, you'll see two sets of stakes, one to the left, which is kinda near the chicken coop, and one to the right, which is along, you can kinda see, like, where things have been cut and where they weren't.
Yep.
Um, the one on the right is the, uh, Stony Ridge side of the no-touch zone. That no-touch zone is the grass in between the two sets of stakes. Um, so the question is, what do we do with this no-touch zone? It looks like at one point, uh, one of the homeowners cleared, you know, back, passed through, right through the twenty-five, uh, foot no-touch zone. Um, the idea, I, I discussed it with the building inspector a couple of years ago. Um, the idea at the time was to put a fence on the actual property line, not the no-touch zone, to delineate the, the two properties. Um, because right now, obviously, there's no, I, it would be hard to determine which property is whose.
You remember this case, Matt?
No.
I, I, I remember a little bit about this in regards to the Garrett.
Yeah, yeah, Bobby Garrett.
Yeah, he, uh, he's here. Um, I wanna say, is this the one when you first pulled him off of Pine Street, the house on the right?
Uh, no, this is, uh-
Okay, then this is a totally separate end.
Totally different, yep.
You can show it right.
Yep.
Um, so one thing I did, uh, Jim was unable to be here tonight, but he did enter something into the record for us, so I'm gonna read that right now. Gentlemen, you shouldn't have, I mean, he was saying gentleman, but now I can't say that anymore. Um, so the memorandum is gonna be, um, Jason right here.
It should be in your packet.
Yep.
Right, uh, stir the ena, right there.
And I'm just going to enter this into the record. Honorable members of the vo- on the Board of Appeals, I submit this letter in my absence this evening to speak on the twenty-five-foot vegetative slash no-touch buffer zone located at the Stony Ridge subdivision. Based on my recollection of previous discussions with the developer and the adjacent or abutting property owner, quote, and then in parentheses, on Pine Street, the abutting property owner had cleared some land from vegetation and trees at some point in time. I'm not exactly certain by whom or when the clearing took place. When this subdivision lot was surveyed, it became apparent that the vegetation and trees were actually land owned by the subdivision and in fact, part of the no-touch buffer zone. Discussions with the abutting property owner indicated that they were unaware that the vegetation and trees actually didn't belong to him, a discussion that involved the developer and surveyors con- uh, to confirm the lot lines. We now have a circumstance that creates a void in the no-touch buffer zone between the development and, and an abutting property. After much consideration, it appears that the solution presented to me by the developer by way of installing a fence is a reasonable solution to the missing buffer. It also physically, uh, delineates the property lines between abutters that may prevent future encroachments. Uh, I endorse the possibility of this board allowing the fence to be erected within this specific twenty-five vegetative no-touch buffer zone, respectfully, uh, James Aguirre, our building commissioner. Um, so, uh, Greg, do we have to have a voting members for this, or do we just?
Do we have to get, uh, public input first, or then we vote for voting members? Um, I think, I think voting members, I'm not the correct.
Uh, well, Jason is, so Jason can do that.
Gotcha.
Um, is there any public input on this case? I didn't think so, but I'm gonna make sure. Uh, if anything else you wanna add, Owen?
Sure. Jason?
This is the state. Jason, could you please assign three voting members to the case?
Just, uh, just one question before I do that.
Absolutely.
Um, am I allowed to appoint you to vote, or do I have to do, since John recused himself, do I?
You, in this case, yes, you can put me on.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, sounds good. Um, I will, um, elect Greg Logan, Michelle Lima, and Zachary Perrin to, uh, vote on this case.
Okay. Greg, are you, are you fine with the fence going up? I assume, right?
Yeah, um, so this is-
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, sure.
Can you, Owen, I just wanna make sure I know exactly which line you're gonna put the fence on.
On the property line itself?
Which technically is the, no, the end of the no-touch zone, here, or on the no-touch z- the line that-
No, the property line is at the end of the no-touch.
So that's where the fence will go, right there?
Yep.
And then the, the butter knows that because these people probably think that's part of their yard.
Yeah, no, so, so, yes, he knows that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my, one of my questions was to make sure, I was surprised your butter's not here, especially with this type of concern with the, uh, no-touch zone.
Yeah, we're in right now.
Yeah, all set?
Yeah, we're all set, thanks Jim.
Thanks, Tim. Um, so I was kinda concerned about that, that being there. Uh, are you putting it on the boundary line, or are you putting it inside the boundary line to maintain the fence at any kind of-
We're putting it on the, on the boundary line.
And you are gonna maintain the fence if you're responsible for the fence?
The homeowner would be maintaining the fence.
That's all that matters. Okay, and that's gonna be a bi- what chain link, I figure?
Uh, no, it'll probably be a vinyl fence.
Okay.
Like a six-foot vinyl practice fence.
Okay.
So it doesn't go this way?
And it's going on the boundary line?
Mm-hmm.
I have no other questions, I will use that one.
Um, no, I'm good now. Uh, do I have a motion?
My, 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 I have a question.
You are, yes.
You are.
Uh, just with the record, Jonathan's speaking, uh, he's a board member, but he lives in Stony Ridge, so he's speaking as a homeowner and resident.
As, as a general resident in the area, and my question is, I heard Owen just say the homeowner would be responsible for the fence, so my questions are two. Number one, which homeowner, the homeowner from Stony Ridge or the homeowner on Pine Street? And also, if the homeowner is going to be responsible for the fence, where is that stated? Do we know that the homeowners agreed to that?
Uh, I think Jonathan, when I was stood from what, uh, he had said it was the homeowners' association?
The Ston- not, not the association, no, the homeowner for the lot in Stony Ridge. So, so it'd be like any other fence that they had put out, we're just putting it up.
On the actual property, go, so, just say, uh, whatever, Stone Ridge, the guy that owns that house.
Lot thirty-five.
That's his.
Yep.
So, uh, the association's not responsible for that, right? It's just that gentleman?
Yep.
So it's not the Garrett, it's not the Garrett property?
Correct.
No, he wouldn't, he wouldn't own that.
Gotcha.
And is Lot thirty-five been sold?
Yeah, no, that's very sorry, okay.
Is Lot thirty-five been sold?
No, not yet.
So that's gonna be, uh, on the deed?
Yep.
Anything else, Jonathan?
No, I'm good, I just wanted to clarify.
Nope.
It wasn't cleared.
Nope, that's fine. All right, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, close the public input.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Always in favor?
All right.
All right. All right, so I will make a motion that we, um, approve the fence to be placed on the property line, um, of the owner of, uh, Lot thirty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the fence that's shown in front of us on Lot thirty-five, that the owner of Lot thirty-five will be responsible for maintaining the fence on the property line in the no-touch zone.
Any discussion? Always in favor? Hi.
You need a second.
Oh, a second?
You need a second.
Second, I can't second anymore.
Okay.
A second?
All right, Michelle, a second?
Yes.
Always in favor? Hi.
Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman of the board, um, so Greg, did the motion?
Yep.
And Michelle, yes.
Yep, okay. All right, all set. Um, so while Owen and Fisher are here, um, we have members of the, mine's HOA here, is that correct? If you guys don't wanna come sit forward, you can, you can, if you wanna stay where you are, you can do that, too?
We're already over the law.
You're good? Okay. So, oh, one second, we'll wait till Jonathan has his.
Come on, John, will you hurry up, please?
Okay, so one thing that is nice-
It was, I'm sorry, it was, um-
Take your phone.
Um, is that what's the completion of the Pines? We now have an HOA that has had a meeting, so you guys wanna give us, uh, input on that? And I, I guess, uh, introduce yourself to the board as well.
Excuse me, I'm speaking right now back there. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Bob Doyle, the trustee. We've declared positions, those three. We have a treasurer, an operations person, and a administration person for the lot. We just had an election, we were in a poll, so off here, what's our priority? I will do three years, Mark will do two, and, uh, Signe will be the interim, with more people in this area.
Okay.
Operations, I'm sure.
And after that, then it's a staggered three-year term, and we're all up again to three-year terms after this.
Okay.
So there'll only be one person coming up for a vote each year.
Okay.
There's only three members, is what you're stating?
Yes. So we have, uh, operations, we have treasurer, and administration.
Sorry, guys, I couldn't hear that.
That's all right.
Okay, so now Fisher, at this point, um, they're waiting for you to transfer over the, you're still the trustee, or not, or not anymore?
No, we're not trustee. We transferred over the trust, the, the leadership.
They haven't transferred over.
Correct.
Okay.
But, you know, any, of course, any assistance they need, uh, they, they, they can always come back to us, and we're happy to assist them.
Okay. And now, and they're also here because you wanted to discuss what is involved, what is yours, and then what is the town's responsibility, is that clear?
Um, in general, I mean, it kind of looks like the trust is more focused on a development, developing the property, but maybe we're just too darned in interpretation versus, we feel there's three of us that have put, you know, that are on the board, like thirty-three of us have purchased property.
Mm-hmm.
And kind of, we're thinking that we're in charge of how that trust functions, and we're not sure if we're right or if we're wrong, and that's kinda what we want some guidance coming through this far is, you know, do we have the right to go in and change things, or do we have to live within the constructs of that, and, you know?
Okay, I'm gonna reach out to Marguerite on this one because we haven't had a forty-D that's had a HOA yet, so, um, what's, what's your input on this?
So your trustees of the homeowners' association trust and your responsibilities and duties are all defined within that trust?
Yes.
I just have the First Amendment here, I don't have the full document, but, I mean, a large part of this trust was to provide maintenance to the common areas, so you're responsible for that, I'll keep the maintenance, and then there needs to be, um, you know, a scheduled maintenance of certain types of, um, stormwater management systems, the roadway, are the roadways accepted by the town?
Yes.
So that isn't on your, on your obligations of form?
Does that need to, do we need to change that particular form of that?
No, because it only says that it's until, if the roadways are accepted as a town, then, um, only the, then the fortunes of the system directly below the pavement on Sylvia Way will no longer be your responsibility to operate and maintain.
Okay.
So it already says that, it's in there. There's, um, financial security provisions related to the stormwater management system, that you're gonna need to maintain those accounts. Um, there's lighting things that you need to be, um, maintaining, um, making sure that the lighting, on, serving surface lighting, so if somebody happens to put up a light on their house and it impacts your butter, you have the authority to go to your butter and say, you know, you need to re- relocate or change the, where this light is coming into play, we received a complaint. Um, you are going to be responsible for any of the common areas, uh, so if there's parking areas, street lighting, any of that stuff, if any of that is a problem, you guys are the ones who have the authority, communicate with whatever entities, that these are issues, your neighbor will probably come to you and say those are issues. Uh, this isn't the, a trust that necessarily has restrictions like around, you know, no pets, or only those types of things. That's something you could create on your own, but that's not what this type of trust is intended to do. It's about maintaining those provisions related to the subdivision that the forty-D permit had said that the homeowners' association would be responsible for. I just have, like I said, I just have this First Amendment document. Fisher, you probably have the whole thing, too, right?
We do.
So I make sure that they have that, um, in here.
We, we, we transitioned a year ago.
Okay.
And then we get, when, we had a few people, um, say that they wanted to go through board and they didn't get notified or whatever, so we, we each took it under our own to say we're all, we'll go for a year, and then we had an election this first meeting, and we were on a poll, so we went into our three different positions at that point. So we've been doing it for a year.
And we did send Nicole a copy of the latest information from what we have, which is both, uh, what the homeowners received, that package, and then, of course, what the HOA rules and bylaws are. You should have, uh, right, you sent an email, I believe you should.
And we have, I can send them a copy.
I, I believe that there may need to be some type of, um, yeah, you need to send reports of inspections to the right and conservation.
We have done that. We had, we had an engineering firm out about, probably about six, eight weeks ago, and they checked all our drainage ponds and they're finding, you know, they were, they recommended that, according to our, uh, bylaws, it says to be placed a year, but the engineer who came out said he'd recommend that we only have to do it once a year.
Okay.
And we're hoping, I, that's something, I guess, that's a question we would have for the board, if, if we could just do it once a year, if that's, or how would we go about asking about that? The engineer recommend, said it would be fine to do it that way.
Marguerite, I got a question, too. Could they change the, uh, what we have, the conditions that ours wouldn't?
Yeah, so in order to do anything that's different in here, that's different than what's written in this document, you'd need to do an amendment to the trust, which would have to be signed off on by the trustees, the zoning board, and the Board of Health. Uh, so you'd have to come and put yourself on the agenda and ask for that with a proposed documentation to do the amendment.
And that's what we need, we didn't really know the whole of.
Yep, that's okay. Um, and I think, too, it's probably gonna be helpful to, to make sure, have you recorded at the registry of deeds some type of documentation showing who the new trustees are?
Nothing we have. We have, uh, when we just started working there, but now, now with the new election, no, we didn't.
Okay.
Because we didn't, I mean-
I do have papers, which you did, us, when we did the, the, our names, we signed off, Owen signed off, and it's Mark and myself. Signe wasn't part of it at the time, it was not here.
So every time the, the, the elected trustee-
Anytime you elect a new trustee, if there's somebody new, you'll wanna make sure you update that at the registry of deeds. Because you're, until you do that, the trustees listed on the, at the registry of deeds are technically the trustees of record.
Okay. And did we send you guys a copy of that?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to do that, that way the town knows.
Okay.
You know, and knows who, I mean, otherwise, they're gonna go back to the, they ever get a call, they're gonna go back to the last people, and you just, once you're not a trustee anymore, you don't probably wanna get that call.
Okay.
Um, so I would recommend that.
Can I ask you guys, are you at all questioning whether or not, whose responsibility is if any of the aesthetics, aesthetics wanna be changed within the community, even on an individual's property at all? Are you concerned about, or is that something that's already in your, in the bylaws?
It's basically in the bylaws, isn't it, already?
We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wanna change anything aesthetically, it's, you know, we kinda figured it, it's more of things that-
It's more for common areas than-
Common area stuff.
Okay.
So, for example, if somebody has to redo their driveway, they have to tear up the sidewalk?
Well, the homeowner would then have to repair that si- you know, repair that sidewalk, obviously.
And that's spelled out, that's, that's clear?
That is probably not spelled out, but-
Those types of things, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at, the gray areas.
I don't, I don't wanna think that's gray, I would think if the homeowner dug up the sidewalk, they would, and they're putting a driveway, and they're not gonna pave the driveway and then leave dirt, uh, gravel at the end of the driveway for the street. They would, we would, obviously, if they did that, we would go talk to them and say, look, you need to, obviously, repair this in a way that fixes everything and gets it back to the original condition.
I think that's also gonna be a condition, and be that the town accepted the roads, that would be on the town spot, too, the town may enforce that.
Well, if the sidewalks consider within the road layout, I don't know where the sidewalk goes.
That's why I'm raising it, because-
And it's paved.
It's a paved sidewalk, and it's, it is within the road.
And it's five feet, and the hydrants are on the back of the, back of it, correct?
The hydrants are generally right, right in where the, the little grassy pot typically is.
Between the sidewalks?
Between the side and the street.
Between the street and the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Right. So they're a little grassy.
That may be something to look at, because of where the hydrants are located as well, in terms of maintenance.
I mean, I think the other piece of it is that if for some reason it's not, it's not repaired, and now the, the association has to do it, that means you're gonna be expending the funds of the charges that you have from everyone, so your neighbor, your neighbors are gonna be frustrated that I have to pay for repair that this particular person caused.
Well, we would go after that person, obviously.
And you'd put on a, some sort of a lien, and so you, as trustees, have that authority to do those types of things.
Right.
If somehow you were to decide to donate land to the town down the road, you as the trustees have that authority to make that decision under this trust.
I'm, I'm just thinking that that may be something you wanna make very clear in your documents, of whose responsibility it is for what, because that's, those are the kinds of places where there might be, those are the kinds of issues that are the pot bulk of the league.
I think that's more, I mean, to me, that's common sense, you ripping up your driveway to repair your driveway.
Well, it's more than common sense, it's a legal issue. A homeowner cannot go and on somebody else's property, which is the association's property, and destroy it and not fix it. I mean, it's that, that's more than common sense, it's a legal issue.
But they're crossing it.
Pardon me?
But they're potentially crossing.
And then we would, then we would get a lawyer, have them pay for it, and they would also, I believe, if, I believe in the documents, it states that if we have to go after a homeowner that, uh, because they're not, they're violating rules, that they actually have to reimburse us or pay the lawyer that they're rehired.
I think what Marguerite is saying, though, too, is that you wanna try and avoid any, if there's anything you can do in the document to potentially have to avoid any kind of special assessment, because of something like that on an interim basis, even.
I mean, that, this document's already, yeah, this document's set, so I think if you created other types of rules or regulations, if you found you might need them, you could probably create some sort of operating bylaws, but, um, this document itself, in order to make any amendments to it, requires the signatures of the trustees and two different town entities to amend.
Which would be the zoning board?
And the Board of Health.
So Board of Health and, how, how is the Board of Health involved in, uh?
Because they're dealing with, uh, sewer-
Oh, okay.
It's primarily a maintenance-
Right.
Trust.
Right.
And addressing the common areas, and what, how we're maintaining those, so they're dealing with some of that. The conservation commission did not end up being a signatory to this, um, I think because of the forty-D element associated with it.
Is there any other questions, or any?
Oh, we have a question.
Sure.
Farley's Rules and Regulation Enforcement, uh, any guidance there?
There's nothing in, uh, there's nothing in the bylaws that really is-
Well, it says you have the right to adopt reasonable rules and regulation, regulations governing the enjoyment of the owners of the trust property.
Yeah, that, that, to me, that means the common areas, or what if someone, uh, you know, it says three-bedroom home, someone decides to put an addition on the house and make a fourth bedroom.
So that's for the town to, I mean, you would, you would come to the town, and you would say that we have a deed restriction that prohibits this, and, you know, the zoning enforcement officer would have to, they'd need a building permit to do it, so hopefully, the zoning enforcement officer already is aware of that, and that's-
Something, okay, somebody doesn't cut their grass, we wanna tell them to cut their grass, it's fifteen feet high, they don't cut their grass, what do we do?
Um, you talk to your neighbor, those are hard ones.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's-
Yeah. If at some point in time it creates some impact into the trust property, you may be able to try to tie in some sort of legal claim, but, um, it's, that's not easy. It's, you know, eventually you might be able to get, it might be considered some sort of sanitary issue, but-
The hell passes.
It's, it's a neighborhood.
It's yours.
Yeah.
And, and revision, we can't revise the document, we would make amendments to it.
That's the only way to revise it, is to do it as an amendment, and then you need to bring it forward and ask for permission. Pieces that relate to maintenance on a semi-annual basis or annual basis, like, all of that, as you start to operate with this, may make sense that you do collectively as a whole, just so that you, but you may also say, you know what, ultimately, we decided, maybe we do need it twice a year, because it's worth it to get set up for the winter, and it's worth it to clear out for the winter, and, you know, just, it might be worthwhile to spend a couple of years with it and then see what works best for you.
Right.
You know, this board, when it permitted this years ago, and this one was one of our really early ones, I think it might have been even before you guys, um, they didn't know what it was gonna look like, so, they made the best guesses as to what would make a reasonable sense of maintenance plan.
So, uh, going forward, I guess, how, how involved, if at all, do you want us to be with you guys?
Well, I think you have to kinda work together, if you're gonna make this all work out.
And we're, we're open to doing that, I mean-
I mean, should, do we need to have, like, a meeting, just with us, just, discuss the news, or?
If you, at any point in time, feel you need revisions, it's always useful that maybe come and talk to the chairman.
Okay.
I think, you know, some type of, uh, ongoing notice of who the changes in trustees are appropriate. If you're filing your, um, annual maintenance pieces, you wanna copy the zoning board, you can, it's not required, as long as you've provided to the right town, because if, if needed, and the zoning board hears complaints about it, and they find out that this is something that's supposed to be copied to the conservation commission, they're gonna go talk to them first. Um, but, you know, if you wanna copy the zoning board, it just saves, somebody comes to them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I'd rather have too much communication than no communication. So, I, I don't care if you wanna send us an email every month letting us know how things are going, if you have any questions, or if you just wanna come, come ask us how our agenda's looking, and if you, what, guys wanna come in and just catch us up on what's going on, you can do that, too. It's up to you guys, I mean, I mean, I wanna do whatever we can to be there for you, so, um, uh, June, I might, uh, do you guys have, have a need to come before us in June? I mean, do you, or just wanna- I mean, do you, or just wanna?
I'm trying to get an understanding of if we wanna make revisions, what we do and things like that. Like the cleaning of the retention areas, after the inspection, after the engineers that was pretty much really the problem of the year, something like that. I mean, it's five hundred dollars out of our pocket twice a year versus once a year. We would rather go once a year. Our budget is.
Okay.
Something they have to come in front of us with a meeting for and change, that's one of our laws, you know, we wrote on that, it was one of the conditions. So your engineer would have to use Peter Williams and, but Phil Hashid, I guess, we use this way on that deal.
Yeah.
For now, unless you wanna change your name, Mr. Williams, and have your engineer, which could cost you money as well, I'd leave it alone. Obviously, it's working well now, it's brand new, but as it gets a little older and used, you're gonna find that you're gonna wanna do it more than once. I just don't wanna see you make any changes without, then you, then you guys are in violation of our law, what we put down for conditions, and that'd be a problem too.
I can also, having Nicole forward you guys my information, my email, my phone number, if you ever had any questions or anything. I'm fine with that as well.
Okay. That'd be good.
And if you ever need us to come to one of your meetings too, whether it's just myself or the chairman, or you want the whole board to be there, whoever can go. Gentlemen, I assume you have no officers going, if they have requested us, right?
No, probably.
That, that for you, Michelle, no?
We just need to be a posted public hearing, or a public notice.
If it's more than, if it's more than a certain amount of people or?
Two of you, you're a three-member board. So anytime you're more than one at the meeting, you need to post it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep, sure.
Did you, so you guys are elected now. Did you get a certified document at the town registry of deeds yet?
We didn't know we needed to do that. You guys basically just, that's something we just filed earlier.
Okay, okay.
A little later today.
So when that happens, could you provide a copy to the office?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
These guys are already existing members, so they may not need to.
So they may not need to.
You may already have it.
Right.
I don't know where you filed the last time.
We did file there.
The two of them?
Yes.
Maybe that's one.
So you may just have to add, yeah.
And that's just a matter of taking an authorized piece.
If you have a template you used the last time, I'd use that same one and then, yeah. I think that makes it, if you help them through this one, I think that makes sense.
That's what we're here for.
Are we doing that in Bristol? We're not doing that from the time, right?
No, Bristol. At, in time.
They had, they had, they had on documentation. I went there, but they were kind of not seeing much of this part, you know, we were looking for fees and things like that and they said they didn't. We also asked about liens. They say it stays in all the documentation there. Somebody doesn't pay their HOA fees, you can put a lien against the property.
That's true.
But we went to the, the registry of deeds and they said, there's really no mechanism in here to actually apply that.
Yeah, you'd probably wanna be talking to the town on that if somebody wasn't paying the HOA fees.
Ah, it's, it's.
The town. I'm trying to think, I think it's the treasurer.
I think it would be Mary, yeah.
Yeah.
We have our, we have our first home sale in the development, so the homeowner's paid up until we go out to fill again in October. So we sent him something, six weeks ago, just saying that, you know, you're paid up until this date. I'm assuming at the closing, the new owner will then, we have to give him a credit because the new owner will benefit from it.
Yeah. I mean, until you record the lien, then you're not gonna have it on record that it exists. So, you know, I think most homeowners associations that I'm familiar with probably spend a little bit of time and send some nasty letters for a while and then take a while to actually go about recording a lien. That costs money too. And there's a recording fee that's associated with that. So, you know, usually you just try to really go after the people to get the fees. You set those fees, whatever those fees are, you set based on what your expenses are. So if you have, I mean, you have certain things you have to cover. You're gonna have things that may come up and be more expensive and you might have some years that you realize you're okay and done anything more. But you kind of do that through an annual, the treasurer, once with the budget and figures that out and establish what you need to use that. And I don't know, you take, collect fees monthly or yearly?
We do it twice a year, at least, no.
Is there anything else you guys need from us or want?
I think we're good.
You got, everything's satisfied that you guys came here to get? Okay, excellent. Gentlemen and Michelle, anything, anyone else have any questions for them or want anything from them? Okay. All right, you guys are all set?
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a nice.
Yep.
Good stuff.
All right, that leaves Dyson Woods, so moving on to review, discuss an act case three eighteen, Dyson Woods meeting with Attorney Corey to discuss requested documents.
Hi, I'm Michael Corey from Madoff &amp; Corey in Foxborough. I am new counsel to the developer, Dyson Woods. This is a forty B project that's been going on for a very long time. I guess maybe you could, you could mark the beginning of the issuance by this board, but a comprehensive permit in two thousand four. They're very capable and longtime counsel, had developed health problems and really couldn't do it anymore. With me are Jay Zola and Jay Futuramo. They came to me and asked if I could help. Your town offices were kind enough to pull together all of the materials that they had because I was getting my arms around the project and the fifteen-plus-year history.
Yeah.
And another thing that was very helpful was Marguerite's letter of last April in which she identified things that from the town's perspective, she felt hadn't been addressed. I handed out to you guys a letter that responds to each of Marguerite's points in her April, I think it's April eighteen, two thousand eighteen, letter. I think we've addressed most of them in terms of the DEP reporting and the sharing of that reporting with the town. I've gotta work with, with these guys to make sure that that was provided. If there wasn't, we'll make sure you get it. We've been at a loss because former counsel really, he was hit hard with issues and it's been kind of addressed for a little bit. We have, there are, there were amendments, sixty-five units, sixty-five lots allowed in the subdivision off Pine Lane Road. Twenty-eight percent of them are affordable.
Eighteen total.
Eighteen, eighteen affordable, sixty-five total. We have, we are down to the last eight lots. And so we're trying to get our arms around everything necessary to get the road accepted, make sure the DEP is satisfied, make sure you guys are satisfied, make sure Mass Housing has everything they need. And so I thought that it might be best if we came to you to see if there was anything other than what Marguerite noted in her letter, both of April of last year and then in September. And it's in, both of her letters are in, or November of last year are in this package. I'm sorry, September eighteen, twenty eighteen. Whether there's anything other than those items that you have or questions for us because the big push is on to close this up and move on.
Yep. So Mari, what, what's your feeling on what they've submitted so far?
I'm, I'm just.
I didn't give you guys a chance.
I can't tell you if it works.
You mean, you're not ready yet?
Yeah.
But, but I, you have my April, you have my September, and those are the two pieces that I know in my mind, when I went through this, had what I thought was outstanding from the permit perspective.
Right, right.
So I don't mind spending some time looking at this.
Terrific.
I can respond, if the board's comfortable, directly to Attorney Corey, and we can go back and forth a little bit. And then at some point in time, when we feel we've got everything updated, I'll try to send a follow-up letter on that. If there's more needed, we'll just have you submit it.
Okay.
And I think the DEP piece, I'm sure as you're working on it, is something I don't mind continuing to work with you on if the board's comfortable with that.
Perfect, thank you.
Because my suspicion is, probably hasn't all been done, but let's get it, let's get it working now so everyone knows and is familiar with it.
Right, right. While, while you guys are kind of reviewing things, we're gonna be connecting with the DEP, making sure that they're satisfied. And they've issued two permits and authorization to wastewater treatment facility. I wanna make sure that, the first, the first discharge permit, stormwater discharge permit was entered in two thousand six. The next one was in two thousand eight. In two thousand sixteen, they, they modified the wastewater treatment permit. I wanna make sure that as far as DEP is concerned, they're good and I'll let you know because more, more important than DEP, you know, whatever the DEP is concerned about, thank you guys.
Right.
And then we'll, we'll just confirm with Mass Housing. We believe that the regulatory agreement that they needed for the disposition of the affordable units was drafted and agreed to, it just hasn't been signed. Prior counsel did it. I'm gonna make sure that that's done and if they need changes, Mass Housing needs changes, we'll make sure that's done and I'll report back to you. I guess, and how many lots are there left to be?
Eight.
Eight.
Six affordables remain at two market rates.
Okay.
Of which four of the six are under purchase and sales and one of the two are under purchase.
But they have yet to be built?
No, they're all built.
They're all built.
So everything's built up. They're not complete, but they're built materially.
I think I would like to get a picture from homeowners, if there's any outstandings.
Is there an association established? I remember there was something at one time that was still in the audience. The association's been turned over.
So it's been turned over.
As of last May.
Members like that of the field and appointed for their homeowners association. Yeah, I haven't had anything to do with running it for over a year. I was on the board initially, I sort of took a position. I'm on the board, I'm the fifth vote. If you guys can work without me, I don't wanna, I don't wanna influence what you guys are doing.
Are they, are they aware that you're here though?
Tonight?
Yes.
This is nothing to do with that.
I guess what I'm wondering is, I would like to hear from the association if, whether or not there are any outstandings that.
Well, the road's not complete.
Well, it may be, but it may be more than the road and I would like to hear that.
Okay. You can, I'll give you the numbers. You can certainly approach them if they wanna come in, I don't know why.
When, when, maybe, maybe counsel can work together first.
What, what it may be as part of the remaining things to do, we could get a letter signed by the association that confirms at some point in time that with the exception of whatever final pieces need to be done with roadway, there's no other pieces that are outstanding. Would that satisfy you, Jonathan?
Um.
I mean, do you want them actually to come into the board? I'd rather have something in writing for the town.
No, well, I agree.
Something we can put in the packet.
I want something that we can put in the packet. If the association feels they can't put that in writing, then that's all the more reason for them to come in.
Right.
So yes. I will reach out to the, to the board.
And just like a silent party of the board too, like a fifth member, you have stated. No, no, I was, I got interrupted. I, I was, I resigned or I stepped down, whatever. They had a new, they, they elected a new fifth person. So as far as I'm concerned, they're running independently.
Okay.
That's why when I said, the association has nothing, has to do with controls the common land, has nothing to do with the houses or the lots or anything like that. So any, any homeowner's opinion with regard to their houses has nothing to do with.
Right, but there may be some comment questions outstanding or things that they're in other discussion with you about or felt should have been addressed. And I think it's important for us to hear that.
I think, yes, I would think though that time to do that would be when we were completely ready to submit for acceptance rather than when we're, you know, two-thirds done with the road and the place looks like a bomb went off. It's probably a little bit early to be saying, are you satisfied?
Yeah, right.
What Josh was trying to say, by the way, if you, these lights ain't been working for a while, why are you gonna do the road now when you still have to fix the lights? Something stupid like that. At least if we have it all hashed out now, I think it'll be a good thing that everybody has.
I just don't want them to come back to us later and say, you know, you guys never gave us a chance to speak up and say X, Y, or Z, and then you went ahead and granted.
Okay.
So just wanna make sure we avoid that.
So your counsel's gonna reach out to the association, gonna get a letter to Marguerite, and Marguerite's gonna get it to our board and we'll go forward with that. That's gonna be sufficient.
Yeah, I mean, they can even send a letter to, directly to you guys.
You guys.
Yeah. I mean, I assume you'll copy me on whatever, we'll see.
I will.
Do you want it in the board's record or not?
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll send a letter to the homeowners association, tell them what we're doing, ask them if they have any, other than the road, any issues other than the roadway, which is in process. And if so, let us know and if not, they could put it in writing.
Sure.
That's what we'll.
That's fine.
Okay, great.
And I'll go through this. Did you, there was questions on the recording of certain amendments to the performance guarantee? Did you have a chance to check on all of that?
I'm sorry, the?
Some of the amendments to the performance guarantee, I know, hadn't been all fully recorded and I think we thought for a while, one hadn't even been signed, but I think then we found.
Yeah, there was, there was a modification from two thousand twelve that had been recorded. We found that and it's included in the package.
Okay.
This is in your September twenty eighteen letter.
Um, this was an email I had sent at the time, I'm not sure if I wrote it in my September letter.
You may not have seen that.
We've got back and forth with Tony. I think Tony's probably filed most everything. It was, if he sent you an email, there was some stuff and maybe one that needed to be signed or something. I'll look back in my emails too.
I'll go through this and that might be something, I mean, I, just until I have a chance to go through this, that's only I'm looking at. I do see a fifteen, fifteenth amendment, I think that's the one we thought we were missing.
Sure.
I think it got signed, but I just, I wanna make sure it's recorded. We can, I'll even try to search under that.
Okay, yeah, if you don't see it in that package, let me know what you're looking for.
Okay.
And there was an outstanding issue too, that we were talking about, Marguerite, which forgot to the road bond, because we wanna start doing some roadwork. And as it stands right now, the way that our bond's set up, and I think I'm right, that you're holding about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars and per the current terms of that, the.
Comprehensive.
The, no, the security agreement.
Oh, the tri-party agreement.
That money will be held until one year after the roads are accepted by the town.
No, one year for final buildout.
Fair enough. Final buildout's gonna be the day before it's accepted by the town probably, the way these things always go. So based upon that, we would theoretically, if we were to do all the work this year, most of the work this year, and complete it in the spring, we'd be laying out a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, then we have to wait until May of two thousand twenty-one in order to get that money. And we don't think that that's fair. And we think that given our permit, which specifically states, I believe in number, clause number fifty-one, that our subdivision will be accepted along the methods of the planning board, given the fact that the planning board holds no escrow funds beyond the time of street acceptance, we don't think we should be subject at all to the bond, to the surety agreement, because it's in, it's in conflict with our, with our comprehensive permit.
Yeah, what, the, the tri-party agreement with the developer's lender ensures that there's money in case the developer dried up and blew away to, to build a road. Also, the developer is working in full compliance with the planning board regs on the roadway. Holding a hundred and seventy thousand in a bond one year after everything's been built is excessive.
So I think we had talked about this before. If you were looking to reduce that contingency amount somehow, then I think you would simply need to do some sort of an amendment to the tripartite agreement. So I'd check in with your bank and if you believe that, and our engineers have in the past taken a look at what the final number is and said honestly, what's really needed to be retained is more like this amount.
Right.
And then we would just need to do an amendment to the tripartite agreement.
We already did that. We already did that.
That's a summary, I heard that.
But I don't think we would do the amendment to the agreement.
Oh, okay.
No, no, we not, we had, we had Peter Williams calculate the retaining work, the remaining work to be done.
Right.
Beyond that, we, we never really discussed at all with anybody beyond a few conversations, you know, general conversations here, modifying the, the tri-party agreement.
Yeah, I mean, I've been saying that since I've had an email.
Right, right. You, you found that, but I think my point more, more generally is, we don't think there should be anything like that at all. Because if I, because what, what happened was, we called, I got confused and I told Joey to call Vine Associates. So Joey called Vine, Pete doesn't work for Vine anymore, but he called Vine and he spoke, spoke to Matt and Matt was like, the planning board doesn't require any developers to hold any money after the streets are accepted. So that's when the little bell went off and I said, but if my subdivision, per my permit, is supposed to be accepted per the planning board regulations, then why do I have a retainage that the planning board doesn't require? Isn't this a forty B and forty Bs done with zoning? Well, my, my. Well, my credit on that. Yes. So when we come in front of us on these forty Bs, we make conditions in these things and we, obviously, this is before my time. I agree. So I'm saying somewhere in the verbiage, there's probably something in there stating that you agreed to, or whoever, yeah, we'll agree to do the road with the, whatever it costs, they say it was two hundred thousand dollars in the bond.
Or you can give us a piece of property to hold for that. That's, we used to do a few things, a few different pieces of property.
Right.
I'm not saying that's not your case, because it was prior to that. But you can't hold us to what the planning board design is when we do the 40Bs, the zoning board.
Except, except that if, if you, as the zoning board, put the planning board regulations as your standard in your permit to me, you vow yourself, you vow yourself to the planning...
But I disagree with that, Jay.
Why?
Because you're talking about two different conditions.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
Does the, and I, and I'm not certain about this, but I think that, I think the comprehensive permit in terms of the roadway requirements references the planning board and nothing, nothing more.
That's to accept the roadway. But we're talking about the 10% contingency, which has to do with final buildout.
Right, and based on, based on what you're saying.
That's in the...
I'm not questioning anything having to do with final buildout. I don't mind the money sitting in the bond right now. I'm not questioning that. What I'm saying is, I want the money, I, as I do the work, as the planning board does through their building process, they release the money.
Right, but what you're asking us to do is to change a standard practice, a standard part of practice, which if we do for you, then it goes across the board, going down the road.
But every subdivision, excuse me, but every subdivision is different.
Every 40B.
Who's explained, no, but every, every 40B is different. It was explained to me that, that the main rea, one of the main reasons why, I believe it was on Pine Street, that you required the escrow was because that road was originally designed to be a private road.
That the developer who was just here
Yeah.
is in a similar situation.
No, but his, but, no, but his, his development was designed to be a private road. My development was designed to be a public road. The standards...
No, the same happened with Stony Ridge. Their development was designed to be a public road.
That's right.
They have a, there's a contingency for final buildout. And I think what ended up happening is you essentially got your money upfront. And now we're down to the end in this contingency for final buildout, which was shown in the original cost to complete estimate attached to the tripartite agreement. That is now being held because we need to hold on to that. If we want to reduce that amount, we want to make an amendment to that document and make it less than 10%, then that would allow you to be able to collect more as you finish the roadway.
Okay, so, uh, just for clarification, uh, we, the road gets completed, the town signs off on it, it goes to public meaning, it gets accepted.
Yeah.
Are, are, is the town looking to hold $170,000 in the bond, that full amount for the roadway?
That's...
For a year, or then we reduce it?
A year from, a year from final buildout. That would be consistent with the tripartite agreement performance guarantee condition. That amount was estimated originally, back when the tripartite agreement was created, to be $170,000.
For final buildout.
For a final buildout amount. You already, we probably should have been holding back 10% all along and every time you got an amendment. And then we wouldn't, then you'd have more to, you'd have the ability to feel like you're doing work now and getting paid for it. If you want to reduce it, which I don't think the town would be opposed to, provided the bank is on board with it, do an amendment.
Right.
That's the way to go about doing it.
All right, and when, when I'm talking to the bank about doing the amendment, after it's been accept, the final buildout is complete and it's been accepted by the town, I could see that the town would want to make sure that the, the road just didn't, you know, curbs didn't collapse or potholes didn't develop, things like that.
That is the concept behind it.
And that's what potentially you could come back and ask for, you know, a change from the 170, either a lower... Well, that's what I'm saying. Or you could, or you may come back and say, can we potentially do an amendment or something for six months, potentially? I don't know if that can be done or not, but that would be the time you would do it.
I, I think that, that we're at where I think, I, I think you said the same thing last year, Marguerite. And I think that where I sort of hit a wall was where, I think what you're saying is, well, go do the work and then come to us and see if we'll give you the money.
No.
So...
No, I'm saying right now, if you believe that you, you think that $170,000 is an excessive amount for the town to be holding, go get an amendment and reduce that. We still have the money held, but then you'll have more amend, you'll have the ability then to go do the work and have additional money released up until that 10%, whatever that new percentage of hold is.
Jay, correct me if I'm wrong. Wait, wait, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we have a, a objection to holding 170 now. It's where it's done.
Right.
And accepted.
Right, right. I'm not questioning the sound one, so...
There's no reason to hold 170.
Yeah, so if that, if you really only want to hold, you say, look, we all agree what should be held is, you know, $30,000. Then we do an amendment to the tripartite agreement document. We come up with whatever the new amount is and whatever that percentage is. You, and then as you do the work against the 170 to get down to the 30.
That's what I, yeah, that's exactly right, yeah.
But you can't do that right now
No, we can't.
until you get that amendment document in place for...
And we can't until we make more progress in the road.
Which is fine.
No, no.
Or you got...
I don't, I don't want to make any more progress on the road until I resolve this issue. That's where I've been for a, that's where I, when I kept talking to Nicole. It's like, I want to build the road, I got to resolve this issue first. Because I don't want to go ahead and do $75,000, do the work, then come in and then start debating how we're going to handle it.
Talk to the bank. You already have an idea of what the town's engineer is suggesting would be a fair amount for us to retain ultimately. Talk to the bank, make sure, they're the third party to this agreement. Make sure that they're on board with it and come before the town with an amendment to that document.
Do we have something from the engineer that has a number?
I thought that Peter Williams did, he wanted.
No, I said it was $96,000.
I don't remember.
Where did we get that?
Oh, $129,000 was in that area, but it wasn't on subject.
Well, last year, probably, was it?
Yeah, well, we've been on holiday.
Yeah.
We don't, I don't think we ever received it.
Well, we haven't in our notes. Um, it was attached to what you had sent.
Yeah, well, probably because we make that number story.
But it was not what you, not what we were holding, so.
Yeah, I have to go back.
But it was in there. I do remember that. That's why I wanted to say, I brought it up, too, because it was.
I didn't see it in the materials that you various officers...
And I would say...
But I'll go through it again.
If we go back in our minutes sometime in the months of November, I want to say it was, November, October, November, December, in those, in those meetings. It was attached in our folder.
Do you mind going, because you upload all, all the packets to me?
It was attached to our folder, a, a piece of paper from Peter Williams.
Oh, that's...
I don't think we ever asked Peter to do anything. Because we never talked to him.
The town did. Because we wanted to know exactly where we stood over there at that project, because it's been sitting on idle for a while.
Senator Cole, if you, if you could find that in your folder back for them?
Sure.
Thank you.
And you're thinking about, was it November? I'll, I'll just...
October, November, December. I know, I don't think it was December. It was October, November, last time I think you wrote for us.
I've never seen that paper. I mean, I was, I was in the town at the time, but I do remember seeing that.
I remember coming in front, in front of us and then, uh, we looked at it because it was attached to it. And we went round, round, round last time, and it didn't get nowhere, and it was right there, black and white.
For some reason it doesn't exist and they're remembering a different project, then that would be some stuff number one.
I have a funny feeling.
Will they have to come back before us and I want to talk to the bank?
Well, they would have to come before, before you get an amendment.
Yeah, okay, get the amendment. We have to have, we have to have the information if we're going to talk to the bank to reduce it to some...
You need to have the information from the...
From Vine.
Correct.
You know, or whoever, if Peter Williams, whoever they were.
And then my suggestion is, and act, before you come to the, this board, you talk to the bank, too. Because then you'll present to this board the recommendation of Vine and the fact that the bank's on board with it. And then you don't have to worry going through all these steps without getting the last thing straight.
Anything else?
Nope.
So keep it going.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very much.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Actually, I, I don't know if I know.
Oh, I have your, I have your information.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Can I mention the draft with her?
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I wouldn't have said it.
No, okay.
All right, just moving right along, we look to approve the minutes from the April 24th meeting minutes.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve those meeting minutes from April 24th.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?